As long as you know, you know, reasonable temperature time with Friday night's a little bit excessive.
This is Friday.
What's supposed to be in Luray?
Yeah, you got to be cooler than we are.
Uh, probably not.
Look, you want me to show you what it says for Brightwood?
Sipping of wood.
This is what it says for Brightwood Friday night.
Oh!
You see the real field below it?
You gotta be at least that.
Yeah.
It's always five, six degrees cooler in Luray than that.
It's depends on what part. Normally, it's about the same as it is like mine in your house. Yeah.
Uh.
It's not too much different.
Six degrees on Friday night, but five degrees Saturday night.
Or some wind chill.
Yeah, well, whatever the, they didn't give a wind chill.
Let's, let's see if it's changed yet or not. Nope, still, still down there. Apparently, we might see some snow, too. But if it's going to be raining and then that cold's coming, I'd rather it be snow. That way, it's not sheet of ice everywhere you go.
Hey, man.
What's up?
How you doing?
How are you?
How are you, sir?
Yeah.
How are you? Ready for the weekend? We got a corn.
We do have five of us.
Oh, that's it?
I don't, no, Nathan's not gonna, Nathan's not gonna be here. Yeah, he will. Fi- there's five. That's, that's a majority. Yeah?
Can't have any less than that.
I mean, it's a work session anyway. Not taking any votes or anything, so, you know. Yeah.
I think there'll be more, more people in attendance, probably.
I mean, some, some plan commissions only have, not five.
No, I'm saying, maybe a crowd if there was. I don't know, you might get lucky.
I tell you, I didn't even make it up to see the tiny homes. They all had COVID.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I was gonna see if I could bring one down on the fourth, if we needed it.
So this thing even won't come up?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Now, I just came to see what this was.
Yeah.
I didn't record that.
No, it's about, you can call me anytime. Yeah, unless you feel like sticking around, you know.
No, I, I'm just a bitter view.
Yeah. Okay, alright, let's see, Rob.
Yeah, although it's, it's not his decision.
I was talking, if I was to tell them you're spending all that kind of money, keep being on my account.
You're doing that. Here we go, five people. Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I called them today. Are you, uh, are you giving out free, are you doing free steaks this year?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, now that we do.
That's what I heard when they were saying it's a free steak.
Am I missing something?
He was proud of that.
Yeah, well, it's something, you know.
Yeah.
Can't really read anymore.
Or is that last week's?
Did you see it on his car?
Okay.
Uh, on his what? I got it on his car.
Can't tell the players.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We have, uh, five out of nine, so we've got a majority anyway. So, uh, we need to review and approve the agenda. Any question about the agenda? Anything we need to add? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, we need to review the minutes from two meetings from November 2nd, joint meeting and from November 16th workshop meeting. I have a question on the November 2nd meeting. And of course, Nathan's not here, but do we normally identify the Board of Supervisors liaisons meeting with us when the Board of Supervisors is behind us, meeting with us? No, I didn't think we did. So we, we might need to mark through that part of it. We normally do for the workshop, but not for the joint. So I think we need to.
It doesn't hurt for it to be in there. I mean, but.
Won't hurt to leave it?
It does not hurt to leave it.
Okay. They were here. Okay, any other question on either of those? Okay, if no questions or suggestions, can I have a motion to approve, uh, the November 2nd minutes?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, like signs? Alright, the November 16th minutes, can I have a motion to approve? Moved and.
Seconded.
Seconded. All, all, uh, in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Alright. I think probably I wasn't. Yeah, recording it, I think, so. Okay, as always, uh, with the cases, we will have information from Ligon, following, giving him a chance to answer any questions from the commission. Uh, the applicant will have a chance to address the commission and answer any questions. And then if, uh, there's any public comment, we'll have that afterward. Okay, case number SU dash 12 dash 22 dash 32. Rooted Land Company LLC, Mr. Zachary Whitman, has applied for a special use permit to operate six short-term rental units on two adjoining parcels which he owns. The two parcels combined contain roughly 257 acres and are identified on Madison County's tax maps as 37 dash 7C and 37 dash 11. The 100-acre parcel 37 dash 7C is zoned A1 agriculture. And in this zoning district, more than one short-term rental on a single parcel requires a special use permit. Currently, this parcel contains one by right three-bedroom short-term rental unit, and an additional three-bedroom short-term rental unit is proposed. The adjoining 157-acre parcel 37 dash 11 is split-zoned C1 conservation and A1 agriculture. And a special use permit is required for more than one short-term rental unit on a single parcel. Currently, this parcel is undeveloped, but four short-term rental units are proposed. The proposed four short-term rental units would be a three-bedroom unit and three one-bedroom units. The subject parcels are located on Graves Mill Road, Route 662. The existing dwelling located on parcel 37 dash 7C contains a postal address of 2410 Graves Mill Road, Madison, Virginia. Alright, Ligon, anything to add to that?
Sure, um, so, if you go to the map right, that's, that's, I don't know, right there, as good as you can see, uh, 37 dash 7, that's going right there. So on that parcel, there is an existing dwelling and a garage studio apartment. And on, on, and, and one existing septic tank, two wells, other two tanks and one drain fill. At the north of that parcel, there's another, there's a proposed, will be one additional, uh, short-term rental proposed for that parcel, three-bedroom, that'd be a stick-built. And they don't tax map, um, 37 11. They have two septic drain fills approved. Uh, those are in the packet, and just if you've looked at it, they're actually expired, but in order to re-up those, you just simply have to apply for the construction permit and they will, the Health Department will, uh, re-up the, uh, the, the time limit on it. So just as an FYI, there's a three-bedroom perk. And then a, uh, two three-bedroom perks. One would accommodate a stick-built house. And the other three would, uh, the other perk site would accommodate a, a three-park model. And I say park, not as like in a park that you go to, but as in parked. Uh, in those, you know, I said that Madison Vine has the same sort of thing at, uh, at their facility. It'll be connected to electric, water sewer. Uh, I've been talking to Zachary about this proposal. I've been here for three and a half years. I think he came in a month after I got here, when he purchased the land. Now, he does own an adjacent property of 100 acres as well. So there are three parcels there, about 375 acres that he owns. It's right behind 37 dash 7, that, that parcel in the green. I think when he first came in, it was, you know, he had the one rental, and he still lives in the studio apartment. Kind of thought about doing a, a wedding venue, uh, maybe multiple, uh, rentals. Uh, you know, last few months, we've seen some pretty large proposals, and I think my comment was, it really doesn't fit in some of the larger proposals, and, well, we have one here that, quite honestly, with the division rights, the, the ability to put one rental, uh, short-term rental each parcel, uh, he really, we know that two of the six are by right. I mean, he could divide and really almost get the same thing without really having to proffer, not proffer, or really have to work with any conditions. And I'll get to those in a minute. Um, if you look at, um, before we get to conditions, access road and VDOT. As far as traffic counts, you can see that down Graves Mill Road, once you, once you pass, I think it's, uh, what is that, um, Garth Run Road, you go from about a little over 800 trips a day, that's what at least the 2020 traffic counts had, to you really drop off about 350. In between Garth Run and General Banks Lane, which is where this, uh, entrance is located, uh, you have a little over 300 trips. So you can see, you know, once you get to, to Garth, it really drops off. They don't have a traffic, a peak hour. They do have a peak hour from Wolf Town Hood to Garth Road is about 70s, what was it, 77? An hour, I, I would suspect you're probably somewhere in the 30s is the peak hour there. So it's a low-volume road. As far as accidents and looking what's, what's happening there, Wolf Town going back 56 months, we've, uh, had, they've recorded seven accidents. I want to say, let me make sure I got, four of those accidents involved deer. One was a pretty serious one where did have a, uh, medical attention had to be called. I had to rewrite this in the report, but the other three, uh, you know, non-animal related, uh, two were near the intersection of Wolf Town Hood. Uh, and the other one was, uh, uh, I think it was beyond, uh, Brian sent me the accident reports. It was past this particular proposal. None of those required medical, uh, attention. So, the road is curvy, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's got a few, a few blind spots. But for the volume that we're looking at here, uh, you know, I think one could argue that, you know, if, if there were several three, four-bedroom houses back there subdivided, it probably would be more before as a daily trip generator than maybe, you know, kind of, uh, trips that are generated from this, from, from kind of more heavy toward the weekends. So that's just sort of a little background on the traffic. On conditions. I mean, the big, uh, the big one here that, you know, the applicant is willing to just make this run with the applicant. So, uh, sort of a, again, he, he plans on being there and operating this and being on-site. Something that we've kind of gone both ways with, uh, on these type of proposals, but if he's willing to do that, then there's, I don't think there's any, any reason. Uh, I think it kind of gives a little more assurance to the neighbors that they have any issues, they can deal with Mr. Whitman. Number two, uh, he has talked to some neighbors, and there's a little bit of an addition to number two. Be limited to six down, six short-term rentals, if you look at number two. The one thing added to this that Mr. Mr. Whitman is fine with, is that, and I'll just read it, maybe it could be worded a little differently, but essentially applicant has a proffer that, that he, he will not request any revisions to this SUP, nor at least submit any application for a new SUP, which he would seek to increase the total number of short-term rentals with your parcels. Maybe, you know, normally, maybe something that we wouldn't include. I mean, the neighbors could come in with short-term rentals. I mean, uh, you know, you just still have to come back, uh, here, but, uh, if, if, if that's something that, uh, he thinks would make his neighbors more comfortable to what he's proposing, then I don't see any reason why we couldn't add that to number two. Number six. You know, we do allow up to 15 events a year, uh, large-scale events, large sale, outdoor events. He is, and number six has, has, you know, stated that there will be no events. It's not saying that maybe the people who rent, if someone was to rent all the units, they couldn't have a small-scale event. But it'll be nothing, uh, to the public, no outside events. He's not going to do any concerts. So the one suggested revision to number six is no outdoor commercial events and no outdoor private produce events shall be held on the site. This includes events that are open to the public, whether paid or free, as well as events that are invited, as well as events that are invitation-only. So, I mean, that's pretty much saying there's no events going to happen, uh, on the site. No amplified sound, and we have the number of cars, which he already has that with his guest, number of cars. No more than three for the three bedrooms and no more than one for the park model one bedrooms. And the last one is just simply, he does have a right-of-way to come through Berry Mountain. There's a bridge to cross there. I mean, the chances of that bridge flooding out, it's going to have to be one heck of a flood because it's pretty high up, but I mean, it doesn't hurt to have a, another means of ingress egress, so Berry Mountain Lane could be used as an emergency entrance, had to get in, there was a flood or something. Uh, and there's also an access easement just down from this principal, entrance that again, on the, the rare occasion there was an emergency, that could be used as well. So those two revisions, maybe additions to the, uh, to the conditions. You know, again, as I see it, you know, again, two of these rentals could be by right, so even though we're asking, he is asking for six. You know, uh, I think I said in one of the emails, we just put his, at six, and that's what he's going to do, but, uh, two would be, would, would technically be by right as the one he is operating. But, uh, other than that, I'm going to keep rambling here, but, um, again, just kind of go back to, I know we've been through short-term rentals and we, you know, we went through a month or so ago. 256 acres, you got six, six short-term rentals, three of them are one, less than 400 square feet. Willing to proffer not to add any more to it. I think that's pretty, pretty low impact, my, my humble opinion. Yep.
Okay, any question? Yes, Mike.
Do the, uh, do you know if the neighbors were that access point on the Berry Mountain Road? Do they know that there's a de-deasement to their property? They do know that?
Lawyers are putting together for liability, but the discussion isn't made, but there's got, the promise, and it's a promise I'll stick to, guests will not use it as purely for emergency in terms of that.
There'll have to be a road to there, right? I mean, is there a road there now? Satellite doesn't really show ones there.
Yeah, there's existing road and a, and a gate, and it goes off of Berry, it's around, comes back in property.
Yeah. Uh, well, why don't we go ahead and just, and have you go ahead to the mic and, and yes, yeah, since. Yes.
Well, the RVs, they are recreational vehicles, obviously. Are they going to be maintained to be movable? Are they going to be able to be a fixed entity?
Well, they're an answer, but it's going to be connected to power. Uh, now, whether or not he puts on a permanent foundation is really sort of up to him. But, and also got to be within proximity to the septic field, so they're going to pretty much be right where he says they're going to be.
Uh, I think what Danny's getting at is it's such a different category if they're left on wheels without any, uh, skirting around or anything, yeah.
Building officials will have a say in that. They're just going to have to determine whether he wants to leave them as movable vehicles or permanent structures. And that will depend on how he can sell them. Whether he's going to have to have a, a foundation that's.
You're going to put on a foundation?
Take all the tires off or what?
I mean, at this point, we're live.
Good now, there we go. At this point, talking to Jamie and Ligon, in terms of how it's structured on the ground, the manufacturer has done both. They have created rods that we can weld and put into concrete settings on the ground if we want to lift them up. Um, that is kind of my initial intent. Jamie says that they will not require permits, actually either way. Um, so I guess I will look at the recommendation of the, the building code, Ligon, to your office.
Yeah, he, he says that, you know, that it's, you just can't live in it full-time. Uh, if it's a short-term rental, that, that's, that's okay, but it's just something that someone can't live in full-time. But it, you know, it, it's, uh, with, with it being hooked, connected to power and all that, I mean, if he wants to put it on a permanent foundation, he can. If he doesn't, that, that's, that's okay, too. Yeah.
If he doesn't have to get a permit, then he can do what he wants.
He'll, he'll have to get a permit for the electrical, for the, for the, for electrical, so he gets a permit. I think the question is, does he have to have it on a permanent foundation? No, he does not. He does not.
Alright, um, I, along those lines, I do have a question. Uh, I don't, I'm not that up on the building code right now. But I do know that in terms of what banks require, which I assume has some foundation in building codes, they treat, uh, quote, "mobile home" on a foundation totally differently than they treat a mobile home that's just up on blocks. So, I mean, there are two different categories we're dealing with.
Yeah, well, it's personal property versus real estate.
Well, that's part of it.
Right, right, but the bill, I mean, I've talked to, we've talked to Jamie about this, and I've talked to him with, with Zachary, and I mean, he's clear that there's a special code for RVs, the recreational code, and he just says, as long as it's not full-time living, then, yeah, you got to get a permit for the electrical.
Jamie told him he doesn't have to have a permit. He can do whatever he wants.
But even at Madison Vines, those in order to be called cabins, he has those with skirting around them.
The wheels are still on them.
The wheels are still on them, but they're up on them, yeah.
We had to get, we did plumbing at Madison Vines, but we had to get a permit for each building. Well, it's true, I have to get a permit for electrical.
Yeah.
He's talking, just, he's not, no permit. He should have to. I, I'm surprised you haven't been told.
Well, that, yeah. I should clarify, a, a building permit is what Jamie specified as you would get for, for a home. Electrical permit, the plumbing permit, and of course, the septic with, with the Health Department. Um, just additional anecdotes, I will skirt these as well. Um, and quite frankly, for tire rot, there'll be something to stabilize it. You don't want to, you don't want an RV rocking, so.
Hurricane scraps don't cut it sometimes.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't think there's anything in the new code that specifies whether you have to take tires off a week.
Yeah, but.
Then the old code, code before this one didn't.
Right.
Didn't make any difference.
As long, as long as they're some kind of a permanent with skirting, you know, off, off the ground, yeah, yeah. And the, the manufactured buildings don't have, uh, the, the building official inspect the construction of the, build, of the manufactured vehicle. But I think he still does have to do the electrical insulation and the plumbing and so forth, yeah. Okay, um, so that's, yes, Pete?
I guess my, my one question in concern is, let's say that you put in six short-term rentals in, and the economy goes to hell in a handbasket, or, or if some unforeseen thing happens, and you're not able to rent these six short-term rentals, and they start sitting there, you got any intention that they'll become long-term rentals? Or are they going to stay short-term rentals regardless?
I have a few family members that'll probably move up here if that's the case, but, uh, no, seriously, to answer your question, not long-term rentals, no.
Because what I see happening here in the county, short-term rentals and vetting breakfasts is growing faster than kids.
The supply is definitely growing.
And, you know, I just, I just don't want to see you have six units sitting there and you can't find it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, remember now, the short, the RVs can't be full-time, so they wouldn't be allowed, just, yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
How, how far are these, uh, other units off the river in elevation, roughly kind of?
Um, the, the river at that point is 608. Um, the highest one would be around 690, which would be the northernmost. I think I call it Site A in the label. Site B is 640, um, and it's on the edge of the FEMA floodplain. Um, and then Site C, similar to Site A, probably 80 feet off of elevation. I have, I actually have the survey with the, the, uh, perking, so I can actually get specifics on that, but.
Is this, what flood, what flood zone is, is this an A flood zone? Is this a, do you know what flood zone this is?
Jamie said?
So it's, it's, I think it's, A is the actual flood zone. It's X, so it's outside.
They're all outside.
Yeah.
The 2020, 2022 model?
Yeah, I think it's 2020 was the last one, yeah.
I think I would probably say that the traffic count was probably drawn during the week, because in summertime hours, spring hours, or whatever, there is a lot of hiking that goes on at the top of the mountain there. And off to the right, where you go back to where the guy built the, the big house up there. There's a lot of cars going in and out there during the weekends, but that traffic count is probably during the week.
No, it says weekly, um, uh, yeah, weekday. I think it even says annual weekday traffic. Yeah, a, a, average annual weekday traffic. Yeah.
Any other question?
And where's the event venue? Where, where's that proposed site?
There is no event venue.
I thought I heard.
That's a toxic word.
He agreed not to do.
No, that was, when I first, what, what Ligon referenced, when I first purchased the property three years ago, um, that was a, a dream or an intense, but, but again, having lived in the community and speaking with neighbors.
Okay. Any other question for the applicant or for Ligon? Okay.
I've got, I've got one, Mr. Chairman. Okay, um, Ligon just said that you would be living on-site and taking care of this?
Correct.
So, I mean, if there, if you've got six units on these properties served by that one entrance, where are you going to live? You're going to build another? where are you going to live? You going to build another house to live in?
At, at some point, I may on, on the other property that isn't included in the SUP. At this point, as Ligon mentioned, there is a mother-in-law suite, I call it the man cave, that I live in, they're on site.
Okay, because, you know, we have that, and I'm sure Ligon will say, we have the six on one, six units on a driveway, right? So the six units we've been describing are all rentals, so if you had another one, that's.
Well, it's not subdivision. It's not a subdivision, so that would, six, six on a driveway would be lots. Parcels. I mean, if you want to call it six different uses, but he's got plenty of acreage, I mean, he's got two hundred and fifty some acres, so.
Okay, there's, there's one common entrance right now coming off of Graves Mill Road. And it's serving six livable units. And I, I thought, I recalled us, when we were talking about that ordinance change that we did, well, a month ago or so, that a short term rental would count as a, as a unit on, on a private drive, right? Y'all see what I'm saying? So.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the subdivision orange, because I think we're really, on that situation, we're really talking about, you know, if you had five lots and you added, and I was talking, that was related to private road maintenance agreements, is getting the maintenance agreement.
Part of it, yeah.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Right, now, I mean, I, I feel pretty confident in saying it, it doesn't really.
Right, Sean, it's.
And remember the. There it is.
Very good. We're all in for it.
I, I recall that there was some discussion about it. None of the discussion related to this type of context. I mean, that was, what we were talking about is what I'm going to call the traditional model of somebody building on an existing private road and getting closer to the limit pertaining to it. Sitting here, I do not know what our ordinance says about that, but that, that's certainly a point worth exploring.
I think we assumed at that point it's going to be six different owners. And this is going to be a single owner and, and two different tax maps.
Yeah, I, I think you're correct about the uses number, though, because that each of these units would require the three acre minimum. Actually, of course, you're not actually on the conservation C1, are you?
None of these, these are fallen A.
So, the three acres per unit, at least well within that.
Right.
Any other question? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as another discussion item, Ligon, you said we've got a. I'm sorry, I'm, I was trying to get home. Any public comment, I think we might. Yes, sir. Identify yourself, please, and make sure the mic is on.
Yeah, you got it, you got it.
There you go.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mitch Bernstein. I live on Graves Mill Road, down the road from Zachary. And I just want to say that I've talked a lot with Zachary, who's been very transparent. And it's, I'm not really representing neighbors, although I am one, I can't speak for all of them. But I do know that many, or several of the neighbors share my sentiment about how important it is for the planning commission and hopefully the board to accept into the document Zachary's proffer on condition two, where he will proffer, he will not try to expand the number of units, either by revising this SUP or just coming in with a new SUP. And he's shared that with us verbally, he's put it on his website, and we believe him. I mean, he's a good guy, but as I say, trust but verify kind of thing. And so if that were to be written into the, it would, it would allay a lot of concerns, at least of the people that I've been speaking with and myself and my wife as well. So I just would hope that the board and the planning commission would take that into consideration and decide to accept that proffer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is. My name is Phil Sterbling. I live directly across from, from Zachary, and I've been over and looked at his property. And I only have one concern, and it's not so much with the houses. I mean, I think he's addressed the housing and the lighting. My concern is the road. When you come down that road, if you've ever gone down it, you're going to go down a hill and then at fifty-five mile an hour, and then there's a hard right turn to get into his property. Now, originally, when he had all of the houses, I think VDOT said that that wasn't going to be a, that wasn't good enough for a commercial entrance. So my question is, and I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but is, does this require a VDOT right of way, not right of way, approval for that turn? Now, the second solution is, is for VDOT to reduce the speed from fifty-five to forty-five. Because people don't go fifty-five down that road, they go sixty and sixty-five, I see it all the time. One of the cars, the accidents, the car burned right in front of my house. I don't know if it hit a deer or what it was, but it essentially caught on fire and burned to the ground. And that was on the property, and my house sits up, up off the road, but, so that, that's my one concern, is, is that road. And it, it's dangerous. Now, I've talked to the postman, because I asked him about moving my mailbox to the other side to make it a little bit safer for him, because, you know, he's on the other side of the road, and so I moved it. And what he is, what he was concerned about is, he said, every time he stops in front of Zachary's mailbox, that somebody's going to come down over that hill and rear end it. So, no, Zachary, I'm not, you know, objecting to this, I'm just concerned about the safety of the road, where it is, and the, the speed limit. And I've seen as many as sixty cars parked back by the camp, not the camp, the trailhead, the Graves Mill Trailhead, I've seen them go all the way up to Wesley Bush's property, which is where that the entrance to his property is. So there, there is a lot of traffic there on the weekends, especially now, because people want to get out and they want to do stuff. So we're getting more traffic on weekends than you think. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My wife and I, Judy, live across the street from where Zachary proper, property is, and.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Ken Elias.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of general questions. Why is a special use permit needed on, you know, what's he got, a hundred and fifty acres, two hundred acres there?
We try to reserve this for comments, not for questions, just, you know, try to make a point.
The other point I'm making is, I don't know what a short term rental is. Does that mean it'll be a weekend, or just one day, or I don't know what some of the terms are in this, things he's requesting. And then he identifies a barn home. Now, is it a barn or is it a home? I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Judy Elias, I'm Ken's wife, and again, we own the property directly across the road from Mr. Whitman. I too, at the risk of being repetitive, want to voice my concern about the traffic and the nature of the entrance to this unit, or these units that he's proposing to put up. Notwithstanding any larger invitations that might be issued by any of the renters, the number of cars that could possibly at peak usage go in and out of that driveway on a daily basis is twelve. And as Mr. Sterbling indicated, it's a downhill run over a rise in a fifty-five mile an hour zone where people don't drive fifty-five. And I think that we have to go on record for the county in case someone is killed and someone turns around and sues the county because they didn't require VDOT to approve the entrance. I think VDOT needs to take another look at this entrance, and I think the planning commission or board of supervisors needs to put it as a stipulation on the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Ligon, since we have basically two questions that have been raised, could you address the, the speed and what is.
I think I said it, I'm going to get comments from them for the, for the meeting, and they're still looking at, but I mean, Zachary's gone back and forth of them over years, you know, and I've got some old emails. At fifty-five miles per hour, it doesn't meet the site distance. So I think what I said the county should do, and I talked to the IRE rep, is just initiate a traffic study, it takes forty-eight hours to do, they do a, they put some, I guess they put some tubes out there and determined the speed. I think a forty mile per hour speed limit there would help. It's not an ideal entrance, regardless of, you know, what's approved. But I kind of fall back on the fact that it could be subdivided, and I, I sort of feel like even if it was just, you know, people's homes back there, you're still going to have that issue. So I'll get comments in the pack, you know, by, by January fourth, and I said, I've talked to them, I know what they're going to say, that ideally, I mean, they don't, you know, we've been through this before, and I know on Duette Road with, you know, they wanted to move an entrance, and we kind of declined. I just would, the way I've been told, you know, at least my conversations with VDOT, is that this is approved, may or conditional, I recommend that we just immediately initiate that, that traffic study. It's not like those houses are going to be there in next year or so. And I think in all likelihood, the study would come back to lower the speed limit there in that section. Because it's fifty-five, it's fifty-five by default, because there's, it's not, it's, it's not posted.
Traffic study would be like the first step to determining what an appropriate speed limit there.
Right, right. And I, I mean, they, they feel like, and I feel like, they would come back, they'd say, yes, we can lower it to, to forty. And, and that's still probably, even at forty, for what, it's probably not going to be the utmost. The entrance is just not ideal under any circumstances. But I feel like if we reduce the speed. There's, there's some forty speed limits, aren't there? Okay, with, within thirty-five, I mean, that's, that's even better.
At some point changes. I don't know exactly where the point is, but I have some property on that road, so I know that at some point in there, that speed limit changes from forty-five to fifty-five. Maybe there's just no, Zachary, I don't, it's at the top of the hill. As soon as you get to the top of that hill, it becomes fifty-five, which makes no sense to me at all, because then well, yeah, but there's, it's the hill past it, but there's a hill, there, there's a couple hills. But I always felt that the speed limit drop, because I used to be a policeman, and I had a house. We do roadside cleanup, and it's dangerous on that, going up and down that hill.
Clay, I will say, the hollowback lane entrance is a yellow coast at forty, or the.
Yellow or blue?
Oh, yeah, recommend it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, they, they didn't, I think we've questioned them before, and we'll just request that it be thirty-five. And I think that's probably the best that we can do on this.
And another thing, Ligon, I, I think it was Lester Oates Lane. We, as I recall, I had a citizen contact me and said, you know, everybody's speeding down their road, there was, it was no, no speed limit on it at all, and we requested that they make it twenty-five, and they did. I, I guess a study ensued, and then they, they did it, but we actually asked them for that speed limit. Remember that?
I'll ask, yeah. Yeah, I'll ask Willis, our VDOT people, can we just put it at thirty-five? I mean, what, what did it take? They didn't think, I mean, wait, they left me the impression it wouldn't be real complicated.
If there's a thirty-five that is before.
Right.
Extending that just a little bit further.
And, and, you know, people do drive, I mean, I mean, you might see the occasional people, tourists or something, but, I mean, the traffic data shows that it, it's not a traffic, people are being careful. When I, when I go there, been to the site, I slow down over the hill, you know, but now, if you're coming from out of town, you might not know that. So I think it's important that it be a post-it thirty-five or whatever by there.
Okay, how about just a, a quick run through, they had a question about what the short term.
Yeah, a short term rental is, you know, think of a hotel room, anything less than thirty days. That's what our code, that's what the state recognizes, if you stay somewhere for less than thirty days, you're short term rental. That means you're subject to short term rental trans proximity taxes. Most, I'd say the far majority, like you said, are going to be weekends. I mean, they do have weekday traffic, but just, it's, it's a fancy way of saying kind of a overnight accommodation, a hotel, a room, or, but it's, it's just that. And I, you know, what would you say your occupancy is now on your one rental? Yeah. Sixty, seventy percent.
Very good.
And we got a lot of short term rentals in the county, and I've heard a lot of, you know, just from talking to folks, there's a lot of competition, so some have seen a little bit slowing. Prices have sort of dropped a little bit, but this isn't FYI.
Yes, Mike.
Hey, so Ligon, does this, say this does well for him, and we've allowed him to do, if, if he decides, I, I don't want these trailer type units any longer, and he wanted to move up to a permanent structure of certain, some sort, can he, is he allowed under what we're getting ready to do?
I mean, I, I think you would have to come back, I think you'd have to come back with a new special use permit.
Which we've said that he can't come back. Item number two, we're going to say that he.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I mean. Right, right.
I think what Mike's saying is if he's replacing them, the three with.
I still say that he'd have to come back with a, unless he was swapping out for a like for a like, you know, to putting in, you know, say, twenty years from now, those park models are seeing the better days. I mean, he could swap out a like for a like, I would say, but if he was going to stick, build three cabins there, or the same similar size, I would say just come and then your special use permit, as long as you don't increase the density.
Same number.
Right.
Can he come in and buy a permit and add two rooms on to one of them?
Can't add on to a park model, I'd say no.
They certainly add on to mobile homes around here, so.
And that is a condition we can include in the special use permit. I mean, anything like that, if anybody else has any other thoughts about it, the place to put them is in the special use permit, rather than guessing what an interpretation might be later. Just remember, a special use permit is basically zoning particular to that lot. And it is the, it's the same effect as a zoning ordinance.
Okay, any other question for Ligon, public comment or anything on this? Yes, sir.
Phil Sterbling and I have lived in Graves Mill. I second Sean's recommendation that we, that we put in that we can't add any rooms to the, can't make them any larger than the current thing are as proven.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly what we're trying to do tonight, is do this kind of thing. To add on to, yeah, yeah, or make them larger.
That's what I was trying to.
Yeah, I think just add a condition that can't be expanded. Yeah. Well, technically, he doesn't have to agree to it, and a special use permit.
Not with a special use permit. With conditional rezoning, you're correct, but that's the difference between. With conditional rezoning, you're correct, but that's the difference between the two, although practically, because they're all so carefully negotiated, the line between what the county is requiring and what the county is asking for gets blurred.
What a septic field would have to go along with that anyway, wouldn't it?
If he was adding bedrooms, right.
Even the three, the three tiny homes are on one three bedroom approved, septic field on well, and then the electric meter. So it's, it's on, it's on. Yeah, as well. And that, and, and just so y'all are aware, they are three bedroom septics. They all approved for five, but knowing the concerns of everyone, I chose to go three versus five.
Okay. Any other question, any other public comment? Okay. Thank you. That being the case, I think we had one more. More or less letting us know something, Ligon, the discussion item.
Right, so on Good Hope Baptist Church, they will be amending it. I mean, here's a question we just were asking about admitting special use permits. In the ad, we clearly say that the 12,000, whatever square feet is the upper and lower level, which I thought it was. But if you look at the sketch that we're about it for, you get a lead to find Brent, that upper level was 12,000. That doesn't change the footprint, it's what they've showed us. But the architect just spread the conditions and said, I think we need to change this. I said, you're right. So we'll simply run the ad over, have the correct, exact square footage, because he's doing the building plans now. And, I mean, my report and things, that's not going to change, but just, you know, just make sure we're, you know, we're right on what we, what we approve, so that will be just amended. And it looked like February, so.
Yes, none of us noticed that the drawings had 12,000 on each level there, so.
We're a little busy. But I, you know, again, just an oversight, so I apologize.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional items for the planning commission? All right, since, do we have any additional items that a member of the public would like to bring up? Nope. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And Merry Christmas. You all have a great Christmas.